Okay, good morning. We are here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, October 26th, Courthouse Square in the Senator Hearing Room. And if you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll start off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's a nice rainy day outside. We had some good, nice, dry days there for a while. So we'll start off with our public comment this morning, and we have one person signed up, Jeff Goodman. Mr. Goodman, welcome.
Good morning.
You want to go over to the side here, Mr. Goodman? Yeah, and there's some microphones there. You can just pull one of those up nice and close.
Thank you. My apologies for not knowing where to go.
That's okay. You're not the only one. The Chair doesn't know where he is half the time here, too, so.
Sounds like we both get told where to go frequently.
Uh-huh.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Goodman. I reside at Lake Oswego, where I am a City Member of the City Council. A reasonable question might be to ask, why am I here this morning? I'm here just to let you know that I'm a candidate for State Treasurer here in Oregon, and I'm going around to different county commissions to introduce myself and explaining that I would look forward to working with the Finance and Treasurer's Office here in the county, so as to continue to ensure the funds that Marion County invests with the state provide the maximum possible return with acceptable levels of risk. The background that I bring to the table is, number one, I believe that Oregon's next Treasurer should actually have experience as a Treasurer. I am a past Treasurer of the Legacy Hospital Foundations with over $100 million, well over $100 million in investable assets, past Treasurer of USA Swimming, Go Michael Phelps, also an MBA from the University of Pennsylvania, Wharton School of Business, and, as I mentioned, two terms of service on the Lake Oswego City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to you today and wish you all the best in your business session as you continue this business of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and thanks for putting your name on the ballot for public office. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have anybody else signed up for public comment, so we'll get right into our business. And I believe it's Commissioner Carlson's turn?
Whose turn is it, Kristi? It's mine?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chair, I will read today's consent calendar. Three items. Under Business Services, approve an order reappointing Terry Hancock to the Salem Foundation Distribution Committee with the term ending December 31st, 2021. Under Health, approve Amendment Number Four with Health Resource Group LLC to add $12,000 in funding for additional services. And under Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services with Maxim Staffing Solutions to add $70,000 in funding and extend until June 30th, 2017.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Move on to our first action item. Consider approval, under Finance, consider approval of resolution to adopt the, no, we're going to do that after our public hearing at 9:30. Thank you, Gloria, for reminding me that. Okay, we'll go to our second action item. Is, under Juvenile, Accept Pay for Success Final Report. And Fay and Bridget are here this morning. Welcome.
Thank you. So, good morning. For the record, my name is Fay Fagel. I'm the Juvenile Director from Marion County and...
Bridget Zani, Management Analyst at the Juvenile Department.
So, we have a document that's before you today that is the Pay for Success Final Report, and we'll be asking that you acknowledge or approve that. I'm not sure what of your processes around that, of what you need to do. But I wanted to start by walking through a little bit about how we ended up getting the report and what the process was. So, the issue that we've been trying to resolve for some time at the Juvenile Department is that we have youth that are leaving our community for higher levels of care, and when we're looking at those youth, we're thinking that those youth could actually be served in our community, but because we don't have the particular resources that we need to serve that population, we're committing those kids mostly to the Oregon Youth Authority and having them placed in residential programs throughout the state. So, the major issue that we're identifying is an issue of family functioning. And so, we're trying to serve that youth within the context of the family, and the family is not able to provide the structure and the environment that's best conducive for those youth to do well and be held accountable while living in their home. And so, the model that we've been looking at is some sort of service that would provide a wraparound service around those youth and those families and help do the family work. Now, I just want to clarify that we do a lot of family work with youth, but in the process of the probation supervision, but there are a number of youth that need something higher than, and more intensive than what we're able to provide as a probation officer in the department. So, the current structure where we're pushing kids into a higher level of care means that they're disengaged from their school, from the family, and their community supports. And those programs, there is not a program that exists within Marion County. They're all out of county. And so, although the programs all offer very good services to the youth, and the youth always make positive changes, when they're re-engaging back into the community from that distance, they are not getting connected to the community in the way that we would like to see, or they're ending up being connected with different communities and living outside of our community. The process of trying to do family work with the family when a program is out of the county is difficult for transportation and distance. So, some of the background is that during the 2015 regular session, Marion County partnered with Multnomah County on a House Bill 2031 that Commissioner Carlson was very instrumental in drafting and helping to support through the legislative session. And that bill would have done this pilot model to do this service that we're talking about. And the bill, I think, was very well received and went through some of the session with a lot of support, and then at the very end of the legislative session, it was not ultimately funded or adopted. And then, I'm a little foggy on this, and Commissioner Carlson can help with this, but there was, I call it a chance meeting with Commissioner Shiprock from Multnomah County. I think the meeting was not chance, but the conversation that came up around a Pay for Success project took place, and there was some interest in exploring what a Pay for Success project would look like between Marion and Multnomah County. So, there was an application that was submitted for a technical assistance grant through Third Sector Capital. And I'm going to read you this. "Third Sector is a nonprofit grantee of the Corporation for National Community Services Social Innovation Fund," which is a federal program. "Our project was one of seven applicants in the nation to be given the award." And that initially came before this Board of Commissioners on August 5th for approval of the $30,000 that the county was putting in. $15,000 was from General Fund, and $15,000 was provided by Mountain West. And for that investment of the county, we were provided with roughly $100,000 in technical assistance from Third Sector. There was also money that was put in by Multnomah County as well. So, the premise of the Pay for Success is that government usually cannot provide funding for startup projects, and the length of time that a project needs to exist to be able to show outcomes, to be able to sustain the funding, doesn't match up with the funding process. And so, the interest is looking at whether there's a way to do a public and private contracting funding strategy and investment. So, Pay for Success is an innovative way for governments to improve the lives of people most in need by driving resources to successful, outcome-driven programs. Pay for Success allocates and invests resources by leveraging philanthropic and private dollars to fund services upfront, and then government pays only after services providers, service providers generate results. So, before you have the final report, and then I just provided you with a two-page, actually it's a three-page draft executive summary that we just received from Third Sector Capital, you will see that it has tracked changes on it. Those are what we're recommending back to them to be made, and I anticipate that they will probably adopt those changes into their final document. So, in the project process, initially, we spent significant time really just trying to determine who the target population would be and the number of youth that would be eligible for the service. And in doing that work, which was lengthy and excruciating at sometimes, we determined that it was probably just as well that the original bill was not funded, because we needed the process to better define who the population was that we were going to serve and what the numbers would be. So, I'm going to ask Bridget to talk briefly about the target population and let you know where that is in your document.
Okay. And around page 23 of the final report, it starts to talk about the criteria, and as Fay said, this was a iterative process, and we eventually developed a criteria that looked at the youth that we had in probation that had progressed on to OYA for residential or YCF placements, and compared that with our juvenile crime prevention risk assessment and found the things that were common for most of the youth that escalated on to OYA. So, that ends up being about 100, 115 youth a year would be eligible for this type of a more intensive in-home service. We expected that of those 100 or so, there would be a certain amount of kids that would, and families that would decline. So, in the end, we'd end up with around 60 or so youth each year that would be eligible and benefit from this kind of a population, a program. So, one of the things that came out in the report as we were working on the criteria for inclusion was that OYA has developed a predictive escalation to OYA score that we imagine could overlay on what we've already worked on to more, more specifically, target youth that were at the higher risk for escalating to out-of-home placement, and that we could intervene earlier and with a program like this that would then prevent those youth from moving on to OYA.
Can you talk about what the population looks like?
So, the population is approximately, a little less than half Hispanic Latino, and most of the youth...
Go ahead.
No, that's fine. Where they have the biggest deficits or risks are school attachment, they're hanging out with friends that are doing equally criminal or inappropriate behaviors, they're not involved in extracurricular activities, they have behaviors that hurt themselves, they don't communicate, the family communication and supervision and supportiveness is lacking, and they're likely to have substance use beyond experimental use or be, being causing problems in their life, like school or work or something like that. The risk factors that we identified also are very much in line with the model of multi-systemic therapy, which is similar to what we were looking at in, as far as what it is intended to improve for youth. So, they fell in line pretty consistently for the youth that we have on probation that would be eligible. And we looked at JCP scores, which is the risk assessment that we do on all probation youth every six months, to see where they're at in their progress.
So, the intervention that we were looking at, again, would be an intensive home service, and that we would be addressing the youth behavior within the context of the family. And one of the things that we know, that it's really important to change the behavior of adults when you're looking at wanting to change the behavior of youth. The project would need to serve youth throughout Marion County, not just Salem-Kaiser area, and that we would want to serve Hispanic Latino youth within a cultural competent and bilingual service, and that we would target intervention using principles to achieve the desired outcomes, and then we would want a very rigorous evaluation process to determine the success of the project. So, we talked about a number of outcomes for the project. Initially, the main focus is to reduce out-of-home placements. And when we talked about out-of-home placement, we looked at four areas. So, that would be county detention, county shelter care program, which is our GAP program, Oregon Youth Authority residential programs, and Oregon Youth Authority correctional facilities. We want to have a reduction in new criminal referrals, and we want to have improvement in the social impacts that are issues of our juveniles. So, substance abuse reduction and educational achievement were the two major ones. So, a couple takeaways from this project. And again, this was a year-long process that we were engaged in at a pretty intensive level. There is feasibility for this project in Marion County. We have the target population, and we have the numbers that would make for a project. We have a very robust juvenile justice information system that's used across the state. We have a lot of data that's collected there and the ability to do analysis of that data. Bridget talked about this a little, but we've got, the Oregon Youth Authority has a very robust research team. They've done a lot of work around the escalation to Oregon Youth Authority and looking at what are the factors about youth that would look at them potentially escalating into OYA, and then looking at a system to see where is a youth best served within the system, either within the county, within Oregon Youth Authority probation, or in a youth correctional facility. So, we have a lot of research that's been done and tools to be able to help us with a project such as this. The major issue has been the funding mechanism issue. So, when we look at the funding process, we had to look at who would actually benefit from the project. And we looked at, so if we reduce commitments to the Oregon Youth Authority, Oregon Youth Authority is a statewide resource, and if we reduce some numbers, that doesn't necessarily have an impact on their operations. So, we would have to have enough numbers for them to need to reduce, like a unit at a youth correctional facility, or to reduce beds at a residential program. And because those are statewide resources, there's always youth throughout the state that need those resources in addition to us. If we were looking at reducing detention, again, we would want to look at at least closing a unit to have the cost effectiveness of making that decision. And reducing shelter care, we have the GAP Shelter Care that currently has 22 beds that are filled with our youth, but if we move those youth to a different level of care, then there are other youth that are currently not, because we need more capacity than the 22 beds, we have other youth that would fill those 22 beds if we took the kids that were now in the 22 beds and put them into a different resource. So, then the people who really benefit from the service are the youth, the family, and the community. So, the discussion is, are there cost savings somewhere that could be redirected to this service? Or is it really looking at, do we get better outcomes with youth and in the context of their families? And that is a benefit in funding that, because we're overall, over time, going to reduce costs. So, that's just a brief kind of overview of the project. It's pretty detailed, and so I tried not to go into too much detail on it. I want to thank Commissioner Carlson for all your work and the year-long process with us, and then also appreciation of Bridget. The Third Sector Capital people continually gave really positive feedback about wanting data and data information, and how quickly they got it from Bridget, and how detailed it was, and her ability to access that and explain it. They were very impressed with that. Thank you.
Great. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, thank you for bringing this report forward. Got several comments, so I'll just take a few minutes here. First of all, just to fill in where you, where you were foggy earlier on Judy Shiprock. I had been interested in Pay for Success for some time. As you know, I've been involved with the Marion County Reentry Initiative, and we had a lovely event yesterday, and have written several federal grants back in 2009, I think it was. And were, was tracking grants through the U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance, and they, and the U.S. Government started becoming very interested in Pay for Success and actually awarding bonus points in the grants for projects that had a Pay for Success model. So, when you get extra points, I pay attention. And so, what is this, and how might we structure it in Marion County? So, I ran into Judy. It was a chance meeting at the conference down in Eugene. Every year, the Association of Orion Counties has its annual conference down there. She had been to a national meeting. Judy Shiprock, Multnomah County Commissioner, serves on the National Association of Counties' Public Safety Committee, and they had had some meetings somewhere in the nation where they had talked about Pay for Success and where she had had a conversation with a gentleman involved somehow with the project that we ended up being with that was really interested in getting youth villages involved in a project. So, she asked me if Marion County might be interested in partnering, and of course, I was interested in learning about Pay for Success and said, sure. So, we wrote the grant, and then we had to actually pay money into the grant, which, you know, I keep saying is the only grant I've ever written where we had to pay somebody to do the grant. I think Marion County paid $15,000, Multnomah County paid $15,000, and then, we don't want to forget that Mountain West Investment also put in $15,000 so that we could do this, and then they provided the additional funds, and we got the technical assistance that Fay described. The model for Pay for Success is very interesting, because it is, there are several ways that you can go about it, several structures. The traditional model, kind of the model that they promote, is the idea that instead of the county contracting for the service, so say we wanted to have this intercept model or multi-systemic therapy, this high-level model for kids. Ordinarily, in government, we, the county, would contract with a provider, and the provider would have some things that they'd need to meet, need to serve a certain number of kids. We'd say that they want outcomes, and then they would report back quarterly, annually, and if they weren't doing well, we usually don't find out until, you know, a year's gone by, and we keep paying them the money, right, to do the service. And then, if the outcomes aren't good, sometimes we just keep paying money to do the service, and we hope that they get better, right? And we give them technical assistance. And so, this is kind of the thing that Pay for Success is supposed to change, and that's the idea that you get investors to invest in that, in the project. So, banks and corporations and foundations that would invest money to see this, this project occur. So, the county wouldn't put up the money, but you would create then what they call a special purpose vehicle. So, the special purpose vehicle is like an independent organization. It could be an LLC by itself, it could be part of like a, like Oregon Community Foundation is the special purpose vehicle. They just create another fund, a separate fund. And then, the, I think the Oregon Health, OHSU project is using them for their special purpose vehicle. United Ways around the nation have had a special purpose vehicle as part of the United Ways structure, and they just separate off the money. And then you create a special advisory committee or a board, and the county leadership would be involved in that board and others that you might. It doesn't have to be a very large group. And then it's that independent entity that contracts for the service. And then that independent entity also contracts for an independent evaluation. And then the outcomes are agreed upon at the time the contract is delivered, and the contractor only gets paid when they achieve the outcomes. So, they have to kind of, I guess they get some money through the special purpose vehicle, and I'm not an expert on how this works even after a year, but anyway, but they get paid for it. And then, if there are, if the outcomes are achieved, and through this feasibility study, we had all of these charts and graphs to show at what tipping point, like how much would you pay for the service, and how much savings would you get in order to break even, and then in order to actually have a return on investment? So, then the return on investment goes back to the investors, the corporations, the banks, the foundations, if they don't consider it a grant and want their money back. So, they get dividends, and so it's the idea of you have these folks investing in services, and then you have this independent contract and independent evaluation, so that nobody says, well, the county stacked the deck, right? The county chose who they wanted to, and then they stacked the deck on the outcomes, and they're either not paying us or are paying us inappropriately, that type of thing. There's a second model. So, that model, we looked at in Salt Lake City, we had a speaker that came, and they've been raising money on homelessness, and they raised, what, they had $6 million? No, they had $30 million in the bank, something like that. They'd raised a ton of money, let's just say, before they ever got started on their project. But, you know, we're Salem, Oregon, you know, raising that much money, you know, we don't have the access to the large foundations as much as others do, and it felt like it was a really big climb to do that model. And then the other part is, for this project, the number of kids that will be impacted is so small, less than 100, that, you know, kind of, would you really get people all excited about doing this project? So, that was kind of the question. So, a second model is that you set up the special purpose vehicle, but you just do a withhold, kind of like what they're doing in healthcare. So, you pay the provider 95% of their contract money and hold back five, for example, and then if they achieve their outcomes, you pay them the remaining five. We actually heard a similar story about this in healthcare yesterday, where they were using it for mental health services. So, we talked about that if we were to do a Pay for Success model, that one might be better, and maybe, in fact, we do another iteration, and we don't even do the special purpose vehicle and set all of that up, but just have the county do that and do kind of more the traditional model, but do the withhold and kind of do a, you know, an iteration of Pay for Success. But, those models are interesting in that it starts trying to move you towards paying for outcomes instead of just paying for services. So, the target population discussion that Fay and Bridget talked about, I got very impatient during that. I mean, nine months of us trying to just figure out who the target population was. And when we went to the legislature beforehand, we said it's 60 kids. In fact, I said this at a meeting, that usually when you write a grant, the target population is one sentence in the grant. We will serve 60 youth, boys and girls ages 16 to 18, who have a particular set of risk factors. And it's almost taken for granted. We just, we just know who we're going to serve. And they really scrutinize that piece of it, because how do you know that this intervention that is this expensive is really going to work on a set of youth or be wasted on a set of youth? Because if they're not high-risk enough, why would you do this intervention instead of things that are less expensive that would equally work for the population? So, that was kind of the struggle that we had. So, we started out with our 60 youth that we talked about to the legislature, and then we used what we thought were the risk factors, and Bridget ran numbers, and we thought that we'd have all the savings at the Oregon Youth Authority, because they wouldn't go to the Oregon Youth Authority. Two and a half kids wouldn't go to the Oregon Youth Authority using the formula that we had. So, we were like, oops, that, I guess that's not working. So, then, we played around for a month or two, trying to figure out how the data would work, and then suggestion, why don't we work backwards? Let's look at the kids that we sent to the Oregon Youth Authority. What risk profile do they have? And then how would we look at the same profile of youth that we have now? And then those would, might be the youth that we would have, avoid going to the Oregon Youth Authority and paying for that expensive service that they have there. So, that's when Bridget ran the numbers, and we worked backwards, and we got, I think, over 100 youth, right? But then not every youth would participate, it's voluntary and that type of thing. So, we ended up with how many youth that would be involved in this?
I think we estimate around 60, 65.
Right. So, we were back to the number that we thought, but much more sophisticated in terms of who, how we would determine who these youth were and that would be involved in the service. I also wanted to mention that it wasn't just Bridget and Fay and myself that participated in it. We had a number of people from Marion County. Jan Fritz led a committee, and she was involved. Jeff White from Finance, Bruce Armstrong from Legal, right? Camber Schlag from, also from Finance, but on the contracts level. And Representative Jody Hack also served on the committee, several people from OYA, and then kind of our same counterparts from Multnomah County in Finance and Contracts and Juvenile and all of that. Judy Shiprock, of course. And then we also had a representative from Portland State University that came a few times. So, we had a, it was quite a large executive group and subcommittees working on this.
And then youth, and the youth villages.
That's right. The youth villages, people too, Andrew Grover, right, that was involved with that. And they were very good about providing us information and helping us understand the service. So, the, I guess the question that I would have, and maybe it's a rhetorical question right now rather than putting Fay and Bridget on the spot, but what, rather, what do we do with this now that we have it? Do we just say, boy, that was a nice experience that we had for a year, and we put, you know, some money into it, and now we're done, we learned some things? But, so I guess my, my, my comment would be, if this service is still needed, and if the youth population that we're looking at is still the appropriate population, I would expect that, number one, we would continue to have discussions with the Oregon Youth Authority, because we had a discussion with Fairbores. Fay and myself went over and met with Fairbores and talked about, and he did express interest in working with us on something like this. I think we need to continue those conversations. And the second is that I think we need to actually develop models. You know, we had costed out, I think, you know, so would internal staff work to do this? And would it be less expensive than using the youth villages, for example? Is there a nonprofit that's closer to home that we could, we put on an RFP and look to see if there's a nonprofit that could do the service? And then come back to us as a board prior to budget time and start letting us know what that looks like, and then we... that looks like and, and then we can explore with you what some funding options might look like as well. But I think it would be a shame, I guess is what I'm saying, to go through all this effort and learn all of these things and identify that there is a need for this youth population and then just do nothing because we say we have no money to do it with. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
I don't know where to start. I don't know, first of all, I know the amount of work you did, but my first impression is, and you won't like it, is that this seems to be a solution searching for a problem and I can't quite get past it. I'm not, I'm just not making the case of what you're trying to do. So I, you know, that's very clearly, Commissioner, tell me what you want. Was it that it, just leave it out there, accept it and try to follow through? But I don't see anything that guarantees any repayment and I never heard what really helps the, this youth themselves, so.
Okay, so the program that helps youth is, the youth villages program is called INTERCEPT. And INTERCEPT is a multi systemic therapy like model, but it is adapted because multi systemic therapy is a patented model that you have to go to training in North Carolina or somewhere and pay a lot of money for. So different organizations that do a similar service give it a different name and adapt it a little bit so it's not that model. But multi systemic therapy, and we've talked about it before, is that you have a youth that is, has a lot of high needs and that youth, our traditional options for that youth are to send them to residential treatment, which means, and that's what Faye was talking about, you send them to Albany or to Portland or to Klamath Falls or where, and they'd be in a bed for ninety days or less now and they'd get some significant treatment. The problem with that intervention is that once they come back, you put them in exactly the same family. And when a youth is in a family, you can do a lot to help a youth, but much of what the youth's dynamics are, are what the parents are doing and what's involved in the home and the school and the peer group and all of that. So that, what multi systemic therapy does is they actually work with the youth in the home in the context of the family, the school and the community. So you have a person who's assigned, a mental health worker, a highly skilled mental health worker, that comes in, does therapy with the youth, does therapy with the family, helps them figure out the dynamics of how they work with each other, helps the youth in the school setting, works with the teachers, works with the peer group and comes at two o'clock in the morning if they need to, connects the youth to other services that they need and kind of serves as the hub. So it's a very intensive service, it's twenty-four seven for about ninety days also, but it's done in the home. And so this is trying to identify, are there youths that we have right now, youth, it's not youths, I looked it up, right now, that we're just sending to the Oregon Youth Authority into residential treatment or even ultimately sending because they commit more crimes while they're in this high needs to the closed custody facilities, McLaren, Hillcrest and elsewhere, that we could keep in the community with this highly intensive wraparound service? It's expensive on our continuum, but compared to OIA, it's less expensive. So I think what we were saying is we've identified a need for the service, there is a need for the service because we have youth, about sixty youth a year, that would benefit from this service, but we've just never had the money in our budget to be able to fund it. And so then the question is, do you use a pay for success model? Do you not do it at all because you just say, well, that sounds nice, but we have no money to do it and we'll just keep sending the youth to OIA? Or do we do some other model where we pay for outcomes? And so I was suggesting that we either just pay for the service, which means we put it in the juvenile budget and, you know, we'd identify, we'd look for grants, we'd ask John, whatever, or do we, or do we structure it so that there's kind of a withhold?
I heard that.
Yeah, but we came to the conclusion, I, I personally came to the conclusion that it would, for this number of youth, while the pay for success model has a lot to offer, it would be more work than it was worth to go and try to seek all this corporate funding and all that kind of thing to do the, the traditional pay for success model. We could do a, a variation on the theme of it if we wanted to do a, a special contract that was more like a pay for success contract, but we would do it as a county, we wouldn't create a special purpose vehicle, that was my, my thought.
I understood all that, but so, do you know what the price might be in the, in the universal set?
Yeah, Faye's actually costed out what it would cost for, I think Chuck did actually costed out what it would cost for internal staff to do it and what it would cost to go out for a local nonprofit. And the issue that we had with youth villages, the one, they're in Portland and so they'd have to send their folks down and two, in doing kind of economies of scale, they wouldn't guarantee us that they would have bilingual, bicultural staff. And that was a, that was a no starter with us because many of these kids that we have that are Latino kids that are in the youth authority, I mean, not youth authority, in the, in the juvenile department that have these high needs. So we absolutely need bicultural, bilingual staff, but we know we have local nonprofits that have a lot of those in, staff. And we also know that the Marion County Health Department has a lot of staff that are bilingual, bicultural. So we think locally, we probably would have a better array of services than going to Portland.
And if I could just add quickly, the Youth Authority has done a lot of work around looking at predictive success rates and, and I mentioned it briefly, but what they're looking at is looking at youth and determining where those youth are most successfully served, in what level of service. And we actually have had, the Youth Authority has run our past data for us because part of our discussion was, it sounded like the court and the probation officer recommendations and then the court decisions were making pretty good decisions about where kids were being placed and why. And we ran the data and the data actually is a little different than that and the data based on their predictive success rates shows that there are more youth that we actually should, would have been better served if we'd actually kept them in the community and not sent them to a higher level of care. So when I say better served in terms of, better outcomes in terms of criminal behavior and activity reduction and better served in terms of connectivity to, again, the community, so school success and those other social factors that are important to us. But even if you just look at criminal activity, which is a, a high value of us is to reduce criminal activity and keep the public safe, the data looks like that there are kids that are actually being sent into the system further and that we potentially will not get the kind of outcomes that we want to get with those youth that we would get if we kept them locally. And we're just in those discussions now and running that data and having those conversations to look at them. But the question for me then is, well, if we don't send those kids and we keep them here, how are we going to serve them if we keep them in the community in a way that's going to enhance the outcomes that we're looking for? And I don't know if I explained it any better.
Yes and no it is, and I get that and I'm, I can tell that it'd be better, but I'm still stuck with it, what is the kind of the price per student?
Correct, yes.
The net price of what you save? Price per youth?
Yeah, that's what the whole, you have to read the report because that's what the report actually shows.
If it's a million dollars, it's too high. If it's fifty dollars a month, hey, I'm right there, so.
And who's the savings too? And that's why I said when we were looking at, you know, who benefits from it? Is it the state that benefits from it? Is it the county that benefits? You know, who, where's the, if there's a cost reduction or a cost avoidance, where is that at? Is it at the state level? Is it the county level? Is it the community level?
So, let me just interrupt again. I can support this to go on and keep looking at, but I just have to reserve and that'll be my final question, is a, a number?
Absolutely.
That I can compare whether that seems reasonable or not.
Absolutely.
And, that's, that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, well, it's a good discussion. I, I think not only the number, but Faye, you're bringing up a really good point. Where's the number saved? And I think that's the type of thing with, you know, thirty-one ninety-four was all generated as a result of saving at the state level in the, in the DOC and if this is, if we can show, and it goes back to the legislature, if we can show that there's a savings to OIA with the direction they're heading, you know, shutting down facilities, then it's something we can go to legislature to, to help with funding and, and I think Commissioner Carlson said, was it you that said or maybe you said it, Faye? It was good that we probably didn't get the bill.
Yes.
Done in the, in that session, but we could always go back there. I'm just looking at the numbers that, that are in the report, because I got to, I got to sit in on the youth villages presentation, that was, seems like it was a year and a half ago, maybe.
It's been a long time.
It was a long year.
And the youth villages presentation and, and the statistics and the things they showed up was very impressive of what they did. My concern would be if, if you can find somebody who's proven that they can accomplish those things versus us trying to do a startup ourselves would be a concern. But the minority issue here, the twenty-five percent of, of Marion County's population being Latino, but yet a third going into the OIA is Latino from Marion County, so there's obviously the need for a cultural difference versus what they do in Portland, although they have cultural issues imbalanced too, according to that report.
Yeah, children, youth of color is their issue.
So.
Overrepresentation.
Appreciate the, the report today. I guess where do we go from here is, stay tuned.
So, and that was my question then for the board and I wasn't sure whether you wanted to accept the report or you just acknowledged the report, I'm not sure what your, what your process is.
It says accept, I mean, we certainly can.
Yeah, we accept the report.
Okay.
Have a motion, yes, John.
Couple of things that I'd like to, to say about this. A, it was a very long process and very involved, but out of that, we gained a much better relationship with OI, OIA than we had in the past. We learned a lot from each other, I think, in this process. One of the things that I've learned a lot recently as the interim director of BCN is that we have a lot of issues with youth in our county with mental illness or developmental disabilities and those kinds of things. A lot of those kids end up in the juvenile justice system because we don't have any place else to work with them, either in the community or in other places like the Farm Home or Trilliam or some of those kinds of places that have beds for troubled youth, which says to me that this is more than just a juvenile justice issue, it's a community issue with how we deal with kids who have mental health issues. And a lot of these children do have mental health issues, whether they're Hispanic or not. So I'd like to look at this more of a, as a systemic issue and I know that the BCN is going to start doing that as we shift the way the BCN is going to operate, but we need then to work with not just BCN, but our health department and the juvenile department because these children, they grow up and they end up in our adult system if we don't. I mean, the savings are really in the long term, not just for money, but for lives wasted if we don't deal with them. So this is really a bigger issue than just these sixty youth, I think.
And, John, you raise a good point because it's possible we could do this in partnership with the BCN as well in terms of, for Medicaid eligible kids, if they need multi systemic therapy, we could actually work through that.
Ching ching. Okay, I see it now. Thank you very much for your presentation. I guess we do want a motion to.
Chair Cameron and I will and make a motion to accept the pay for success final report.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much for your presentation today and all the work and those that even aren't here today, all the work that they put in. Commissioner, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Yes, I would acknowledge that too. I know how much time's been spent. I do hope positive things can come from it.
Okay, we are going to move on to item number three on under action, Public Works, consider recommendation to concur with amendments to the Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary. Brandon, welcome.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. This matter comes before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at the request of the City of Salem for consideration and concurrence in an urban growth boundary amendment to add approximately thirty-five acres of land in Polk County to the Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary for right of way for a third bridge crossing on the Willamette River. Marion County's participation in this process comes as a result of the uniquely shared urban growth boundary between Salem and Kaiser. Both cities' comprehensive plans recognize that amendments to the shared UGB must be concurred in by all four jurisdictions affected, Salem, Kaiser, Polk County and Marion County. On October twelfth, twenty sixteen, the Marion County Board of Commissioners participated in a joint hearing with the other jurisdictions involved to receive testimony from interested persons. The board left the county's record open until October nineteenth, twenty sixteen, for all testimony. No testimony was received by Marion County during that open record period. The criteria that apply to the county's consideration of the amendments are found in state statute and rule and in Salem's comprehensive plan. Staff reviewed the draft findings prepared by the city's consultant and believes that the city's findings adequately demonstrate how the proposed urban growth boundary amendments comply with all applicable state and local criteria for a UGB expansion. Staff recommends that the board concur in the amendments to the Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary and directs staff to return with an ordinance reflecting its decision. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Well, we, we spent a lot of time a couple of weeks ago listening to all the details of this, are any thoughts, questions?
I have a lot of comments and.
Okay.
If you just bear with me and let me go through my little notes and, the first is that the comment I'd make is I heard very little on the real question of the addition to the urban growth boundary, a whole lot of why or why not a bridge? And I know the subject is just that urban growth boundary change, but I'd like to take just a few minutes to respond to a few things I heard and maybe just go on a record and everybody'll know what a jerk I really am, I don't care. The first, oh, let's see, I'll start with this one, I'm not necessarily going to say names, but there was a, an attempt by groups, so-called friends to say that the population forecasts weren't correct and therefore everything was invalid. And I just, my, my quick reaction, well, it isn't adequate today, doesn't matter if the population forecasts are wrong, it doesn't matter, it's all, it's not adequate today, it won't be adequate tomorrow. And I would have liked to just stood up and screamed it at them, but I didn't, maybe I am now. There was, well, transit, that was very disappointing to me. Certainly try to support transit, but I want you to know that, that early issue they had in this project was they wanted a lane and new facilities dedicated just to transit. And not only would be horribly expensive, it didn't save any time in their operations or anything, so there's a little bit of sour grapes, I think, and I, maybe, I'm making things up now for sure, but I don't know, maybe they like congestion and, and traffic and, and feel that they'll get more ridership that way, but it's certainly not to the benefit of our community. I'm going through some, but maybe it's better if I just say less. Oh, let's talk about our climate change people, that was there a lot. And they're serious and good people, I don't have any doubt about it, but they don't seem to understand that it's congestion and lack of movement and idling cars and, that would have a worst environmental effect if that's what they're trying to prevent. So some general things, I've, I've dealt with this kind of issue in a broader sense kind of all my semi political career. I saw it first in sublimity, subdivision wanting to be built and the attitude is really, when I analyze it, comes down to people saying, I'm here, now close the door, that's how I describe it. They move into an area, they want to remain exactly as it is, they don't want it to grow. But in reality, if it's not growing, it's dying and they're, what they're offering is congestion and gridlock versus a thriving community. And I also know or believe that communities that have a great transportation systems are the ones that thrive. The, nobody really brings up how important the, I call it redundancy in our system that we have another, another bridge built up to earthquake standards, which I believe is going to be needed. We don't have anything here and people just seem to forget about it. If, if these bridges or even one would go down, all we have left is Albany and Newburgh and, and they could be just as impacted. And then what do we do? Set a ferry up between West Salem and then truly watch the community die? They bring up funding a lot and certainly that's will be the that's will be the final decider, just like in our last issue. If dollars can be found and make it work, then we'll build it. But this is just one step, this land use thing is one step towards final construction. But I brought up, and I'll say it again right here on television, if we're really serious in my experience and what I've observed in transportation projects, like Woodburn comes to mind, that when the local community really makes a commitment and puts dollars into it, things seem to move. And so I brought up at one of our meetings, if we're serious about wanting to build this, then, then perhaps we should even be thinking about tolling the current bridges. And everybody just kind of gasped, "Oh my, that's terrible." But think about it. If you're going to do it, to put some money into it locally and to lower the cost of it and lower the long range, the long-term cost after the building with the dollars that you collect early, that's the way I'd go. There are ways to get around it. So bottom line, I didn't find a lot of compelling arguments. I did hear a lot of arguments. And back to the basic land use, I'm, I'm fine and will support it. So I went through that pretty fast. Those are the kind of things that come through my mind.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner?
I just have a few comments, and this one won't be nearly as long as the last item. First of all...
That's pretty short.
I meant, not as in saying as you, I'm saying as me in the last item. So first of all, I mentioned this before, that I think it was the day after we had the public hearing, but that is that, I really appreciate the people that came to testify, both opposed and in favor at the public hearing. It went till almost 10 o'clock. It takes a lot for people to come out on an evening and, and testify, and so I did appreciate that. My count was that there were 24 that testified in favor and 32 that testified opposed. I kept a count. May have been off by one or two. And so, I mean, fairly balanced. It wasn't overwhelmingly one side or the other, and they were, they toggled back and forth between folks that were in favor and opposed. So I thought we got a fairly balanced testimony. Did want to comment on the population forecast, and Brandon could probably comment in greater detail on that if we needed it. But my understanding is that, first of all, Marion County planning did send a memo to the City of Salem to state that they were in, that they supported or concurred in the methodology used in the population forecast and that under our many different laws and planning regulations and so on that we have in Oregon, there's one methodology for transportation and there's a different methodology for planning, right? I mean, so, so the way that you do planning, population forecasts, it isn't exactly the same as doing a transportation population forecast. Is that correct?
This forecast is, is for a slightly different area and a way to consider not, the population using the bridge is not only the Salem-Kaiser population. It's the surrounding populations in both Polk and Marion County and people from all around the state and over driving through the area. So it's a little bit different, a little more complex.
Right, because it's for transportation. So that's, that's what makes it different. So if we were just doing a land use planning where we were figuring out zoning and whether there were economic needs or residential needs or whatever, that would be a different thing than what we did for this because it involves transportation.
Process is very similar, but it's very stringent when you do, you're looking for housing or for commercial development.
Right. The third comment I wanted to make is that this urban growth boundary decision was just one step in a process, and it was an essential step because we couldn't move forward on the remaining steps if this didn't happen, from what I understand. But that the decision to go forward with a bridge has been made. So we're not making a decision on whether to go forward with a bridge. That decision already has been made. We're deciding whether or not to concur in the urban growth boundary expansion so that that decision about the bridge can move forward. And the last comment I would make is that I go over the West Salem Bridge now, to the bridge to West Salem around 5:00 at night usually. I try, I tell people, I always, I have it on my calendar at 4:00 so I can beat the traffic. I have not gotten out of here before like 5:23 or whatever, ever that I can think of. And then I'm just like smack right in the middle of the gridlock trying to get over and visit my mother, who is at Orchard Heights Assisted Living Facility over in West Salem. And I visit her Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Saturday is a lot easier than Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And I'm very familiar with what happens at rush hour and how long it takes and how difficult it is to get over the bridge, even today with the population that we have now. And it was interesting because after I was at the public hearing, the, thinking he's the general manager anyway, the guy that, that runs the, that oversees the facility, was, he was at our public hearing. He didn't testify. He came over and then, like a lot of people, left during the breaks because it went on so long. And so he said, "I thought I saw you at that public hearing." And I said, "Well, you did. I was up in the front." And, and he said, "So what did you think of it?" And then he started commenting on some, some, kind of some of the same things that you were commenting about. And, and then he said, "You know, the, the one testimony that I just was, you know, really upset about is the woman that came, and I think she was from out of the area, and she said that she came through and it took her eight additional minutes in gridlock to go through the bridge, and why is it worth spending all this money for eight minutes?" And he said, "Does she not realize that if we have someone who is in medical crisis at our assisted living facility and the ambulance comes over, eight minutes can be life or death? It's their only artery to get those elderly people from that assisted living facility to the Salem Hospital, which is across the bridge." So, and we know there are many times when eight minutes is short and times also when traffic crashes or other untoward events have locked up the entire city all the way out to Mission Street and so on, and that was testified as well. But I thought he didn't have the chance to say that during the testimony, but he said it to me. And I thought it was a great point. So I'll make that point for him today. But those are my comments.
Okay. Another thing I'll say is that one of, some, I think maybe you commented, Commissioner, about there wasn't a lot of testimony about the, strictly the urban growth boundary, and that's what we're doing today, is approving that expansion, not the financing of the bridge or whether we need the bridge or not need the bridge. We're talking about the urban growth boundary and, and the expansion. And so I'm, I'm good with that. The one thing I will say is, you know, and I read all the details about population forecasts, et cetera. This traffic issue, and I'm going to comment about traffic because I got to sit up at Donald with the sheriff and Ellen Haley from our Public Works that put in a lot of time and listened to the people up there. And one of the stats that the sheriff showed was the population growth in North Marion County and how little that growth is, but the traffic counts and how big those are. Well, it's not Marion County residents that are causing that traffic jam. It's people from up north and the growth that's happening in the, the population centers is adding big time to our, to our traffic issues. And when you come, when you come down Commercial Street on a Friday night, I used to have an office on Commercial Street at 1595, and I could look out my window on a Friday night and it was, traffic was backed up all the way to the railroad tracks. And that traffic is people trying to get over the bridge, getting to the coast from north of us and, and our citizens too. So, so if it comes to the bridge, I know we're going to need a bridge. I used to live in West Salem for about 10 years back in 1988. And Samuel loved this one. I used to ride my bike over that bridge once in a while. So, anything else?
Yes, John wants to comment. I'd like to see both bridges shut down and more reliance on South River Road and Independent Bridge.
And the ferry, and the ferry. We need more revenue on the ferry.
You're a revolution.
John, you want to say it?
Mr. Chair, normally I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment on some policy issues, but I'm just up to here with some of your friends, folks, who talk about...
Those are my friends.
The, who talk about their disbelief in some of the population forecasts that we've seen. And I relay this back to the folks that are opposed to the new Salem Police Facility, who argued that the population increase that they're proposing in the next three or 40 years is not true. I've lived in Salem now in the same house for almost 30 years, and I've witnessed the change in traffic flow from South Salem into downtown, and it is incredible. Some mornings, you can barely get downtown. And for them to suggest that we haven't had a huge population increase is either disingenuous or they just don't understand facts. My daughter lives in Portland, and so I go up to Portland quite often. Anybody who does that regularly knows it can sometimes take you two hours to get to and from Portland. I mean, it's incredible how our population in this state has grown over time. I don't know where their heads are, but certainly in the sand. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
I have one more that I left out. There's no alternative suggested, really. Build a little bit on the current bridges, but nothing that makes anything better. And that's what I don't get. Because there isn't an alternative that, that works unless we're truly going to walk and ride bikes.
I think, Brandon, one other comment that you and I had a discussion about, transportation population growth versus population growth for urban growth boundaries for building. Two different, I mean, you, you need to look at transportation on a 40 or 50. You need to really look at a long-term plan because how long does it take to even, I mean, I probably will never see this bridge get built unless I'm, you know, live to be 100. And the, and the population forecasts that we use are shorter term.
We use a, the state law requires a 20-year forecast for facilities. And in my opinion, as a planner, that's a real oversight. Because when you're planning all sorts of facilities, transportation or sewer or water, you want to have a facility that's going to last 30 or 50 years because of the amount of money that goes into that facility.
Okay.
So ideally, maybe some, there is some ideas to change that law someday, you know, look at, look, be able to look more forward. But there is some pushback on considering a longer term for that. So in this case, where you've got a population that maybe is 5% different than if you use the exact method that's provided, one of the methods provided in the, in the statute, you've got issues with, with providing, building a facility that may be useful beyond 20 years is the goal. So having a higher population and looking at the potential for that to address that population can be beneficial when you're putting the money into, into building something like that. And also, you've got a population you're trying to translate into a travel demand, and they don't translate directly. Because all the people that live in Salem won't all be using that bridge in that same way, and different people from outside the community will use the bridge. And so it is not an exact process. The actual, the rule, the state rule actually contemplates that, and it says not to hold these forecasts for these, for these 20-year forecasts to a unusually high level of precision. So there is some flexibility built into the rule to look at that. And in this case, I think there is good reason to consider what the population would be toward the higher end rather than to underestimate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We need a motion to consider the amendments.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, let me get up the, it's going to be better if I do it this way. So I will make a motion that the Board of Commissioners concur in the amendments to the Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary and direct staff to return with an ordinance reflecting its decision.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners. Brent, thank you for your work and thank you for trying to help educate me on this subject over the weeks. Appreciate it.
I want to, I want to point out, normally I'd bring this back in a very expeditious manner. In this case, we're coordinating with four jurisdictions, and we need to adopt the same ordinance among us. And so I may return, I'll return with this at an appropriate point, depending upon how Salem coordinates with the other jurisdictions that are involved. So it could be later in November, it could be early December, even before I come back with this.
All right.
Thank you.
We understand. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to item number four, approval of a contract still under Public Works, contract for services with Republics, Republic Services, Inc., for $325,000 for providing recycling of used tires collected at the Salem-Kaiser Recycling and Transfer Station in, and North Marion County disposal facility. Brian, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian May, Environmental Services Division Manager, Marion County Public Works. Before you this morning is a contract renewal with Republic Services to provide tire hauling services and recycling for the Salem-Kaiser Recycling and Transfer Station and the North Marion County disposal facility. A couple items to note, this is a five-year contract that'll expire September 30th of 2021. It does have an annual anticipated expense of $65,000 a year and a not-to-exceed for the contract total of $325,000. Another thing to point out is this will be retroactive if approved back to July 1. There were some delays with a retirement of this position and some time lag between the contractor and ourselves and getting the contract back. It does have two escalations as part of the provisions, one the CPI increase on an annual basis for the box fee, and another is a fuel fee adjustment that's calculated on a monthly basis based on fuel pricing. Republic Services will provide at least one empty drop box at the North Marion Facility and two empties at the 30, 30-yard equivalent bunker size at Skirts to kind of handle that flow of material that's coming in. A couple other items to note is we have seen a 737-ton increase in tires recovered year over year. And also, as part of that, to account for that cost increase, we did do a price per unit increase effective this last October 1st at both facilities. So if you have any questions?
I do. Go ahead.
Well, I do too. And should state, this was a program maybe I or my family started 30, 40 years ago, and those days grinding. And I'd like to know what is, what is happening with them today? Because I haven't heard a word about it, and they'll take them, but you do want to make sure they're taken. And before I do that, there's a lot of reasons why you want those. You don't want them in any landfills because they do a number of bad things. You can't take them to the burner. There was, they were dumping them in canyons around the state. That didn't work out real well. We were chipping in those in my day and then, and using it for hog fuel, and that, that's the last I've heard about it. So what's happening with them today?
So again, the increased recovery, there is a disposal ban. These tires are not allowed to go into landfill by DEQ state requirements. So there are two facilities in the state, one in Malala and one in Portland that actually recover these tires. And to your point, Commissioner, they do grind them up and process them. A couple of them actually generate like an engineered-grade chip. In my past experience at Coffbeet Landfill, we use them as an operations layer, as a liner system in a sense, within the landfills. So they have other engineered activities they can do, but primarily it is for, for fuel.
And you're convinced they're going through the process, being...
Yes.
Disposed or recycled.
Probably, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Brian, I, I, this was years ago, probably close to, I don't know, eight years ago, I actually toured a facility out on the Columbia River. What's the name of the big industrial complex out there? Representative Smith's area. Anyways, the Portimoro. And they actually were taking tires and breaking these tires down and pulling the oil, pulling the, the metal out of them and doing something. Have you heard anything more about that?
I have not. That's definitely something I can look into.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. I, I think it was taking more energy to get the energy out of it than, than it was worth.
Kind of distilling it almost.
Yeah, it was taking the metal, the, the oil, and it was an interesting process. And I think it was a startup type deal. I don't know if they made it or not.
If I can interrupt, some of those programs, you know, when fuel prices are up $5 a gallon or something, things pay, can, can work, and they don't when they're at this level. So that may or may not be influencing.
I'm trying to think what the name of the company was. I looked it through my notes too. Okay.
Just one comment that I have is that we looked at tire, like rubber tire shavings for the big toy. And what they...
What's that?
Yeah, in Kaiser, the playground.
That's cool.
And, and what they, and what they said was that there, there's so much pollutants and oil and stuff on them that they're not good for kids to roll around in. So they really, that's why we ended up going for the more expensive surface that we got the grant for. But that's all I know about tires.
You know what? When I went through Master Recycler, we didn't get to tour one of those chipping plants. That might be an interesting thing to see that plant in. Malala, where was the other one you said?
It's up in Portland.
Yeah, Malala's a little closer, more fun too. They got a good rodeo.
What?
Oh, for heavens. Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for services with Republic... with Republic Services to provide $325,000 for recycling of used tires collected at Salem Kaiser Recycling and North Marion County Disposal Facilities.
Second motion.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the contract to recycle tires. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Brian, I think you're still up. We're going to consider approval of a contract for services with Republic Services, Inc., for $1,850,000 to provide hauling of waste from North Marion County Disposal Facility to the Waste Energy Facility in Brooks.
Thank you very much. Yes, this is another contract renewal with Republic Services to provide the hauling services from the North Marion County Disposal Facility. It all also includes not only the Waste Energy Facility, but hauling demolition material to Coffinbut Landfill or Riverbend Landfill, and then compostable materials to our Browns Island Compost Facility. In addition to that, under this contract, Republic Services does manage some other recyclable materials that are actually taken to market for us also. This, too, is a five-year contract, expiring September 30th of 2021, with an anticipated annual expense of $370,000 and a not-to-exceed of 1.85 million. Again, two escalations within this contract, one being the first, being a CPI index on the haul box fee. And this would take effect July 1 of 2017, would be the first. And the second is also a fuel recovery that is calculated on a monthly basis. Republic Services will provide, you know, an adequate number of drop boxes to keep us up with that incoming volume. And a couple things to note, we have seen about a 20% increase in year-over-year in volume at the North Marion Facility. And Republic Services has been working great with us to keep us in stock in boxes to move that material. It's been great working with Mr. Kofer and his team as we kind of continue to evolve that facility.
Well, I'm a little confused, and I'm sorry I didn't catch it earlier. In the right, it's talking about tires still, and I think I'm on the right subject. So what I was looking for, Brian, is what is the increase over the previous contract?
It was up and down in regards. There's not much of an increase. We've been kind of holding Republic between the different rates. There's a small $20 per box haul fee to the burner, which saw no escalation. And then we've had a slight escalation in the price to go to Coffinbut Landfill for their materials.
So, but actually, oh, this includes a disposal, too? No?
Uh, disposal is a pass-through portion of that, but with no increase at this time.
So can you give me a, a window where you think the increase on the hauling portion is?
As far as the price increase, it was within the CPI.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have any questions. You want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board approve the contract for services with Republic Services, Inc., for $1,850,000 to provide hauling of waste from the North Marion County Disposal Facility to the Waste Energy Facility in Brooks, Oregon.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that concludes those action items. We'll open a public hearing on, to consider adopting the first supplemental budget for fiscal year. And I don't see Jeff with this, I just see the guy that knows all the answers. Richard, welcome.
Thank you. Jeff is not with us today, yes, he's at another meeting. Good morning, everyone. I'm Rich Meinecker from the Finance Department. I would like to present the fiscal year 2016-17 First Supplemental Budget. This is in accordance with the county policies and procedures and local budget law. The public notice of this meeting was published in the Statesman Journal. This first supplemental is on the county website for the public to see. The First Supplemental Budget increases the total county budget by $13.8 million to $401.07. Out of that $13.8 million increase, $13.6 comes from net working capital, which is the unexpended carryover balance from last fiscal year. The supplemental budget has been reviewed by the Commissioners. There are 32 funds that have changed, so I will discuss only the budget highlights and state amounts to the nearest thousand dollars. The general fund total budget will increase $3,646,000, which is the amount of additional net working capital, and this is all allocated to ending fund balance. However, contingency has been reduced by $352,000 in order to fund cost of living and other pay adjustments of $103,000 total for the juvenile and community services departments, and to transfer out $139,000 to four departmental operating funds, $72,000 to a debt service fund, and $28,000 to a capital improvement fund, for a total of $249,000. The Building Inspection Fund will increase $553,000, which is the amount of additional net working capital. One planned review engineer position will be added to provide additional customer service capacity and cost of living adjustments and supporting materials and services expenditures for a total of $84,000. The $439,000 remaining funds are allocated to ending fund balance. The Capital Improvement Projects Fund budget will increase $1,004,000. Revenue includes a $38,000 transfer from the general fund, plus transfers totaling $35,000 from two other funds. Capital outlay is allocated $917,000, of which $72,000 is for four new projects, and the remaining $845,000 on ongoing projects. Contingency has increased $87,000. The Community Corrections Fund budget will increase $275,000 in state funding. Personal Services has decreased $39,000, and contingency is reduced $36,000. Materials and Services has increased $350,000, primarily for contracted services for the Justice Reinvestment Program, $191,000. Family Sentencing Alternative Program, $90,000. And the Measure 57 Program, $46,000. Various other materials and service expenditures have increased $29,000. The Environmental Services Fund budget will increase $427,000 derived from net working capital. $245,000 is allocated to contracted services, almost entirely for transportation of elite chaite to the county disposals site. Capital outlay has increased $7,000 for the purchase of a elite chaite loading station. The remaining funds are allocated to contingency. The Facility Renovation Fund budget will increase $608,000, all from net working capital. $540,000 is allocated to capital projects, notably health building improvements. There is a $16,000 increase for capital loan, loan, bond, council, and issuance costs. The balance of $52,000 is allocated to contingency. The Health Fund budget will increase $1,373,000, all from net working capital. The entire amount is allocated to ending fund balance to set aside for future anticipated program needs. The Lottery and Economic Development Fund budget will increase $396,000. Federal funds are increased $50,000 from United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Program grant. Net working capital is increased $346,000. Personnel Services is allocated $1,000. Materials and Services is allocated $395,000 for contracted services for economic development projects. The Public Works Fund budget will increase $3,177,000. Federal revenue increased $400,000, of which 232,000 is for emergency preparedness grants and 168,000 for road projects. Net working capital increased $2,777,000, with $1,755,000 allocated to ending fund balance. Remaining $1,022,000 is allocated to ten public transportation and supporting road repair and construction equipment. Are there any questions?
No. I'm sure you have any questions.
I'm still on P for Parks. Just rolling.
P for Parks. No further questions, Your Honor? No questions. We have nobody signed up for public comment?
Either John wants to say something, he still wants that traffic on River Road.
You want to sign up for a public comment? No, go ahead, John.
It's interesting, this first supplemental, there's a couple things going on, well, several things going on. One is that we had more revenues last year than we anticipated and fewer expenditures than we anticipated. We also do this, in the first supplemental, we true-up net working capital in all of our funds and departments. So that's a normal process. But it's fascinating to me because when we were doing this budget last year, I thought we would, I was pretty sure we'd get over a $400 million budget. And we didn't make it until this. And so we're there now, and, and we do have substantial net working capital from, as I said, it's not just unanticipated non-expeditures and new revenues, but because of grants and a variety of other things, particularly in the Health Department. So we'll be looking at these next year for the next budget. You'll probably see another supplemental after first of the year. And, because we continue to true-up the budget as we go along, next year's budget is going to be very interesting, isn't it, Rich?
Absolutely.
Anything else before we make a motion?
Let me, let me ask about that Parks, though. So John, why is, of this 97,000 net working capital, 72,000 put in an unappropriated ending fund balance in the Parks Fund? That means we can't use it, right? Why would we do that?
We don't have, we don't have the plans in place to spend it.
But that means we can't spend it until after July 1.
Right.
Right.
Right. Well, in order to spend those dollars, there's an awful lot of engineering that has to be done in order to, to do it. You also aren't going to spend it during the winter months. So we'll have a plan for you when the budget comes in next year.
All right, well, we'll be doing another Parks tour in May or June. So we expect to see some things done by then, just so you know.
Okay.
So, so if you want to change your mind on this in the next supplemental, you, you're welcome to. I'm sure we won't spend it in three months, but we might.
If you want to add to it somehow.
We'll discuss that with the department.
All right, thank you.
Oh, they're working on it, I'm sure. Yeah, okay, good.
Or we could just spend general fund on it, John, that would be fine with us, too.
No, we don't.
All right, well, they've got some money in there planned, so we'll, we'll see how that, how they use that. Okay.
All right, Chair Cameron.
Entertaining a motion?
If I could, I would make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the first supplemental budget for fiscal year 2016-17.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the first supplemental budget. Any further discussion? No more comments on Parks?
Yep.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Richard. Good work, as always. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our, I guess I didn't close the public hearing before we did that, so.
I did.
Okay. Oh, you did in your motion. Okay, great. All right.
We could ask what Jeff White thinks is more important meeting than being here. Did you catch that? I just wonder.
It's probably working on the second supplemental budget with Parks.
Maybe he got your cold.
Oh, for wanting to stay away wisely.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this, but interesting conversation I had with Mr. White last week in the parking garage about what he was going home to do. I guess I'll read the calendar, but he was going home to, to crawl underneath his place and, and repair or replace a sub-pump underneath his house.
Well, that's always pleasant.
Oh, I just thought about doing that. I've been under houses, and I do not like it. And I saw him the next day, and he got it done.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
He had to crawl out twice.
One of the reasons that Mr. White is a good CFO is that he's very frugal.
I, I did say that to him. I said, this might be a time where I'd hire somebody to go crawl underneath my house. Did you hear about that story?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
About 24 inches of space in place here, and drag any tools behind it.
Yeah, and then he found out he had to replace it, so he had to crawl back out. I found that out just in the garage in about 10 minutes. Okay, here we are, it is, we're at the board session. I'm going to read the calendar for, later on today at 2:30, Capital Community Television, CCTV taping at 7, 575 Trade Street, Southeast. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 27th, 7:30 a.m., Silverton, Mount Angel, Jervis, Scotts Mills, City Schools, County Quarterly Breakfast, the Oregon Garden, 895 West Main Street. On Monday, the 31st, at 8:30 a.m., here in this building, calendar review on the fifth floor at the Silverton Conference Room. Also on Monday, 10:31, 9 a.m., management update here in our building in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Monday at 10 a.m., the 31st, executive session, MCJE bargaining pursuant to ORS 192.6602D location here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Monday, the 31st, busy day, work session at 10:30 a.m. on the San Am Canyon feasibility study in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Tuesday, November 1st, 9:30 a.m., a work session, IT security assessment presentation in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 1st, at 5 p.m., dinner with Dr. Vincent Felatini.
Felitti.
Felatini.
Felitti.
Felatiti at Bentley's Grill, 291 Liberty Street, Southeast. Tuesday, the 1st, at 6 p.m., ACES event at the Salem Conference Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem. And then Wednesday, on the 2nd, we're back here for our board session at 9 a.m. and one of our best lunch, monthly lunches, Wednesday at noon, Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luisa's Taqueria at 523 Front Street, Woodburn. I'm hungry for some right now.
Yeah, what's this doctor dinner? I've never seen that.
Dr. Felitti?
No.
So he is a doctor from Kaiser Permanente that did the original ACES study, adverse childhood experiences. And so he's coming through Fay, Fagel and Community Services Department. He's coming to train our juvenile department staff, and we're having an evening event. You should have You should have got the email about it.
Well, I'm going to be gone for a couple weeks, so maybe I just didn't, but especially if there's food and you learn good things.
Yeah.
I might reconcede.
Yeah.
I'm not very far away.
So, what they talk about, what he talks about is the survey they did of the correlation between significant chronic diseases, obesity, heart disease, that type of thing, and adverse childhood experiences. Your parents had mental illness or were in prison or abused you or, you know, that type of thing.
So, I can't blame them for all my problems? Is that what I'm really hearing now?
I am not commenting on that at all. But anyways, fascinating research.
I know, I can't say what your problems are, but, so, you're getting to get food tomorrow morning for breakfast. I'm going to miss that one.
You are going to miss that one.
So, is that actually at the resort, in the restaurant at the top of the hill?
Yes.
Okay, all right, because I'm not going to be driving around Main Street downtown in Silverton looking for this place.
So, anything, this needs to go to Janet, you said?
Well, both of them.
I just have the stack, you can sign it if you want. I'm just putting them all right here. Well, we did have an event yesterday morning, and thank you both for being there and for...
Great reviews, by the way.
Yeah, it was, it really went well. I was, despite my nightmare that I had the night before, it went great.
I might, we were talking about prior to the meeting, Dick Hughes leaving the Statesman. Did you see, he wrote a comment, I just might say it, he was so impressed by that, he wanted that, he was going to make that a Sunday column on the reentry event.
Right.
I think Sam Skiller in Rover, you ought to write it anyway, I hope he does, but he was a...
Submitted as a guest opinion?
Yeah. It's a shame to have him.
Yeah.
No, that's a big loss to us.
Huge loss.
Dick has been a very fair, really great asset to telling the stories in our community. We'll miss him.
Makes it hard to get our message out, makes me feel like nobody's watching, and we need people watching, you know? You really do, try to make the right decisions on things.
I sent the notice to Representative Gilliam earlier this morning when I found out, and he sent me back, he says, if you were still the House Leader, we could hire him as your press secretary.
Oh, there you go.
Good guy. I think everything was good.
Well, then we ought to close the meeting, so Gloria can quit worrying about us and the TV people can go to home.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
All right, we are adjourned.